Thank you. Up next, we have roll call.
Maybe.
So, we're gonna have to do a voice roll call.
Can you try, I just changed it. You're my god.
Alright, okay. Everyone can start voting, please. Okay, Ms. Martinez?
All councilors present and uh, um, with Councilor Dominguez previously requesting to be excused and his absence is excused.
Okay. Um, next, we have the agenda approval, Councilor Young V. Hill.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as presented, excusing Mr. Dominguez from the meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Alright, up next, um, we have citizen comment. This is the segment of the agenda to where those who filled out comment cards, I will call you up to your name and you can come up to the podium. Uh, and we do ask that you keep your comments to within three minutes in which we keep a timer right there. City of Alamosa and council practice civility, which means that we do not cheer, we do not boo, we do not, um, we allow everyone to uh, make their comments when that, within that three minutes. Uh, we don't clap and city council does not respond to any questions being asked during this portion of the uh, agenda. However, at the very end of the uh, agenda, city council members may make comments at the end of the meeting. Uh, sometimes our city uh, manager and city attorney may make comments to questions that are being asked, so if you pose a question, uh, wait around until uh, to see if the city attorney or city manager uh, answers it and you can also wait to the end of the meeting when city council make their uh, comments at that time. So at this time, I have two comment uh, cards. The first one is uh, Mr. Philip Perry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. You've seen me here before. I left July, June third, thirtieth. Came back the first. I have been by this city treated like a piece of dog. I've got a hearsay restraint. I even got kicked out of Saint Benedict's after being three days. Hmm, I wonder why. Not just this, the cops have been after me. Ms. Ms. Heath won because I called her a glorified dog catcher. And the back of her truck is a chrome dog box. Isn't that a dog catcher box? I was giving her a compliment, but she took it to heart and they sent Lertz, the sergeant, out there to intimidate me. And my wife made him feel sinner than your phone. Okay? Everything that's going on out here, I've watched the drugs come in and out. I've watched the cops take and go into a tent, do their thing in the tent and leave. I've had other cops turn around and say they don't like it out there because there's no lighting, no proper this and no proper that. They can't make complaints. So they talk to me and I make the complaints. I, who I am, my name is Philip Perry, also known in the streets as the Bear. I am of the Veterans Civilian Homeless Coalition. I'm number five. I've already shut down AmeriCorps. I put La Puente on it. La Puente should be checked because my wife walked in when we came back on the twenty-first and walked into a cloud of fentanyl inside that place and wound up in the hospital. Then she wound up again because the cops know she has a bad heart and they stress her out and she winds in again. Phone call. The whole thing of it is they've been after because I pushed for the homeless. I've, one of the ones that signed the bill that Trump put out about the homeless. I've been fighting for sixty-five years for the homeless. I don't play games when it comes to it. I'm not afraid of the cops. I'm not afraid of anybody except for the man upstairs. I fight for the homeless. I eat like the homeless. I dare anybody to come out and live with me for at least thirty days, anywhere you pick it. Come out with what I tell you to come out with and I guarantee you, you'll be crying at the end of a week. I got it passed in Oregon for doing that to Salem. I got it Eugene, Oregon. They've got homeless safe camps. This place here is a drug central for narcs. Get the police right and everything will be a lot better. Your thieves aren't the dopers, it's the cops. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Mr. Bradley Bennett.
Well, good evening, Mayor Committee. Uh, my name's Bradley Bennett. Um, I've witnessed the police brutality um, violating the people's uh, amendment rights. Um, I've witnessed them beat on people. I've also been a victim. I have a head injury from it. Um, nothing's been done, done about it. Um, I also noticed that the courts follow in steps of the same corruption. Um, trialing, try putting people on trial without evidence. Um, it seems to be a biased law system, you know, to pick and choose who you wanna put as the bad guy, who, who, who you guys wanna make pay money. Um, with that being said, you know, I, I question even like, like having judges and s- and people part of the committee that aren't even part of this community. And I think we need to take care of these things and start making sure the people are safe and that our constitutional rights are protected and not violated on grounds of feelings and, you know, people's emotions. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any other comment cards, so we're gonna open it up for Zoom participants. Ms. Martinez, if you can give them instructions on how to raise their hands to be recognized during this portion of the agenda?
Yes, sir, if you're on Zoom and you'd like to speak for public comment right now, you'll use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you're gonna die all star night. Mayor, I don't see anyone raising their hand.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised either, so I'll just turn it back over to our uh, city manager and city attorney for any follow-up.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, obviously, if we have any, any community members that have concerns about the behavior of our police department, we do have a formal process where they can submit complaints that will be investigated. Um, those forms can be found on the website and accessed um, if people need to use the library, um, computer lab or they can always call the police department um, at the five eight nine two five four eight to receive those forms and um, ask um, what type of form to fill out. So if there's any concerns about police um, behavior, that is the formal process to follow.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Okay, that's gonna bring us to the next item on the agenda, consent calendar A. Councilor Young V. Hill?
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, good. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, regular business. One second. Presentation from outside agencies, an annual update from the Main Street Advisory Committee. Mr. Abbey?
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor. Uh, it's been my pleasure to serve as Chair of the Main Street Advisory Committee uh, for I think four years now. Um, if someone had said to me in twenty eighteen that we were gonna put together a really good plan and make Main Street more walkable and, and citizen and tourist friendly and improve pedestrian safety and agree to tax ourselves to improve streets, uh, rebuilds and maintenance and to have monthly street parties and to designate a street for festival and events and light it and use it and to update and activate the alleyways and to sort out, redevelop or find a use for the Lockhearts Building, the Rialto, the old courthouse, the Motorways Building, Pink Elephant Parcel, J.C. Penney's and a couple of other lots around town and rebuild Hunt to connect Cole Park and this property and the river with the Welcome Center in downtown and put together a plan to activate the riverfront. I would have accused them of being high. And here we are. This is a compliment. It's a Matt compliment, so it always has a little bit of pepper on it, alright? But after several years of planned development work, over forty public meetings, including general meetings, listening sessions, work sessions, stakeholder meetings in the fall of twenty nineteen, the council adopted the downtown design plan. And by and large, it's going pretty well. The advisory board was organized to advise. With the boards advising, um, and do almost entirely to the hard work put in by the staff, all of the major catalyst elements of the plan are complete or at the start line or waiting for their scheduled date to get going. And this got done in six years with COVID in the middle. I mean, think about the scope of the projects and activities that I just described. It's a litany of projects that most towns wouldn't take on unless it was one at a time um, and maybe over decades, but in reality, they probably wouldn't try because they're afraid or they don't think it's possible. They don't have the political will or they don't wanna work that hard. Or maybe they don't enjoy the necessary leadership stability that an employee group must have in order to succeed, the stability this one enjoys. So the recurring theme in all of this is plan the work and work the plan, and we can see the fruits of that. When we do this, when community leaders, including the business people and the folks at the county and our city staff and the council members, plan the work and work the plan together, great things happen. It's a huge list. But as long as the team is supported by us to work the plan, the progress, pro- progress will continue. The Main Street Advisory Board has helped drive priorities and advised where advice is needed. The new banners that Casey designed are a nice touch. The Main Street designation for Alamosa is an interesting process. The bottom line in that application is that the city of Alamosa already was doing essentially all of the things that were required in order to get the designation. We just got our card punched. The impact of the chief is being felt. We appreciate his visits to the community, his walking the beat downtown and checking in with folks. We still have our share of druggies walking around, but there's a sense that it's becoming a bit more transitory, that it's a little less permanent and less of a nuisance. I mean, these people have a right to walk around in the community just as much as the next one, but it feels like it's a little less of a problem. More of just another person with a different way. If the community has something to make the chief's job harder, though, then that progress is gonna stall. One of the things we tackled, just I think just before my last update, was common consumption. And this was a tough, tough one because many of us, myself included, like a cold beer at an event. But not everyone approves. Lack of beer is insulting to nobody. And we generally agreed that liability was an issue. So to quote one of our committee members, easier access leads to greater opportunity for misuse and abuse. So rhetorical question was asked in the, in the spirit of helping with the decision-making, that question was, is our community improved or not by having common consumption downtown? And we tabled the question. Alleyway work's gonna be an improvement, too. It's part of the adopted plan. It's one of the catalic, catalytic items and it will logically follow development work on the adjacent properties. There's a lot of development work going on downtown. Uh, the Citizen put out an article here several months ago that talked about the courthouse and the school district building and the hub and the hotel and potentially, you know, another boutique hotel. Any one of those is a big impact for downtown, but four of them? More or less all at once? I'm really excited to see how this rolls out at the end of next year, what it looks like and what it's gonna mean for our catch registers and our tax coffers. Hunt's gonna be a big deal. It's gonna help close that no man's land between this property and the Welcome Center. It's not super walkable. It will be walkable, but at the moment, it's not. It's gonna connect Cole Park, which are, which are one of our major festival and event locations, City Hall and the library, Main Street, the Welcome Center and with the rigor, riverfront activation going on, pull all those things together and kinda put Alamosa on the waterfront property. It's already on, but hasn't really exploited yet. The Creative District has been, is working on plans to recognize the creativity that's been here for generations and bring funding and support to that. The murals is a step in that direction. A whole bunch of murals popped up last year. So I'm excited to see what the next ten to fifteen years has to offer. I think that we have some of the town's best and brightest on the committee. Um, I also get to come. But with the five major catalysts almost in the bag, the question is, what do we get to chew on next?
Thank you. Thank you, and then I'll open up the mic to uh, council members who may wanna make comments or have questions. I'll start off with Councilor Young V. Hill, followed by Counselor Liz Hensley.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Matt, uh, really appreciated your intro. That was awesome. We should like steal that and blast it all over. Um, but no, I, I wanted to just thank you and your team for having a vision and taking that vision and taking our plans and kind of what we envisioned and just running with it. I guess my question to you is what, what is next? What do you think should be next?
I don't know. That question came into my head about ninety minutes ago when I realized I was asking the question I didn't have an answer to. No idea. I mean, there's big stuff happening. I feel like, um, I feel like there is a development momentum that has finally kicked off, that we've all been, we've all known innately was here. It was, it was present, it was in the soil in town and something just kinda needed to happen. The Grabers and the Brewery, they were a little on the front of it. Hobby Town, my timing's dumb luck, right? We just, just dumb luck. But all of a sudden, there aren't any places to buy or lease on Main Street and it's been, what, twenty years? So, so I don't know. I think, um, maybe it's time to go back and ask that question in a proper, structured, public fashion. What's next? Why we still have some runway on the stuff we're working on?
Okay, uh, Counselor Liz Hensley.
So Matt, I will say, um, as being the council representative, it is a fun group to be with. Uh, the things that I really like about it is all of the discussions, the listening, um, we don't always all agree, um, but at the same time, it's that respect. There's a true respect and listening to each other and seeing from each other's point of view and then sort of coming together. And I think with such an energy and with the, um, dedication and the passion for what, for what the committee wants to do with Main Street, um, that is where that success comes and you are a big part of that, including everybody else on that committee. And I know what, I don't have the answer to that question, but I do know that we will have one. And when we get there, I know we'll be able to tackle that as well, but it is something to be truly proud of and I, like you, am very proud of our Main Street.
Hey, Council Carson?
Matt, thank you for what you're doing and what you're always doing. Um, to Councilor V. Hill's point, he said in a council meeting and he's uh, on a committee, so I think intellectually, it's already our property, so we could use that. But no, just, all that aside, you, you guys are doing a really good job. I, you know, just hanging out for First Fridays, the vibe downtown, just on First Fridays and just everybody being able to to feel what Alamosa's about is, is really great, you know, it, it, um, they, the whole scavenger hunt thing that they did a couple of weeks ago was really cool. It just brought like this vibe. Everybody was real excited about it and uh, I, I just, I really think you guys are doing a great job. The downtown has a feel that in my life, you know, I've been here a long time and I've never felt that kind of vibe down there. Um, the community vibe that you get like on the First Fridays or, you know, just on a regular night, how the early hours and the way people together, it, it feels, it feels safe, it feels good. Thank you, chief. Like, like he said, you guys have done a really good job. And uh, it does, it feels really, it feels like a community. It doesn't feel like you gotta be looking over your shoulder or like, you know, anything weird's gonna happen. So uh, I think you guys are doing a great job. So thank you and thank you, chief. Thanks for what you guys are doing down there, down there. It was a, it was a good time last time I was there, so thanks.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Jackie V. Hill?
I, I also wanna say thank you for everything that you guys do. And I've lived here all my life and I guess it's been, I don't know, the past eight years or so that things have started happening in the downtown. And it's exciting to go to the festivals and to do um, the concerts on San Juan, everything. It's, it's so changed in, you know, since I've lived here all my life and it's, it's just exciting what's going on.
Council Crips?
Well, I'd be remiss if I didn't say something, Matt. And I'm not going to echo, these are great sentiments and I, I do stand behind them a hundred percent, but looking forward, moving forward as a Main Street, continue to bring that pepper, continue to keep the focus on retail. You know, don't allow us to get too fast for our own good. And one of the things I've always appreciated about it is that your honest double check comes into play more often than you know. So, thank you for everything that you bring to the committee. Thank you to the Main Street Committee for keeping everyone on task. And um, I look forward to what's to come. Thanks.
Okay, I'll wrap things up, Matt. Um, thank you and your, your team for everything that you're doing. You're really uh, improving our, our downtown area. I had family members come in from out of town this weekend and uh, they really loved our, our Main Street. They went and did business with some of the businesses down there as well. So that means a lot and I really appreciate you acknowledging our chief's effort and presence uh, being downtown. That, that means a lot as well. So thank you so much and keep it up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, on the regular business. Uh, brought forward by city staff, Public Works, First Reading of Ordinance Number Twenty, Twenty, Twenty-five and Ordinance Amending and Updating Chapter Twenty of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Alamosa, uh, Concerning Utilities.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
It's an awful lot of twenties in this one.
Yeah.
Um, so normally I, I give a pretty high level uh, review of our ordinances, but this is one that has been pretty long in the works, so I'm, I'm gonna take some time because there's, there's quite a few changes and I wanna make sure to highlight the, the major ones. So Chapter Twenty of our ordinances deals with utilities, like it says on the tin. Um, there's really a handful of major components as it stands. There's wastewater, there's water, there's sewer, there's solid waste and then there's backflow prevention. It's kind of a Frankenstein sort of chapter and it, you know, it's been, some of it is from nineteen sixty-four when the city charter was last adopted. Some of it is relatively recent. And, you know, it, it really takes a lot of time to kind of sift through it and it's been something that we've been working on in the back burner for honestly, probably about three or four years. You know, we have situations come up where we see, oh, that, this doesn't, you know, meet a state statute or this isn't really relevant today or this is really confusing. Uh, so that's really what we set out to do. So we rewrote the entire chapter. Um, so the, the biggest ones that I wanna point out, eh, well, I should back up. One of the reasons why we're finally bringing this to you is uh, the state passed a, a bill this last year that requires some changes to our backflow prevention. So this was just the perfect time to really just get it all done and push it across the finish line. Um, so I'll, I'll just highlight some of our major changes. Um, so the entire structure has been changed, uh, not only just the numbering, but, you know, we've moved things around, so it makes a bit more sense. Um, you know, I think probably the worst thing was the sewer and the sanitary sewer kinda cross pollinated and it really didn't make a lot of sense. Uh, one thing that we changed is we're using service line for our uh, sanitary sewer instead of building sewer. Just one of those things that it was less intuitive. That one dated all the way back to the sixties when it was, was done, so modernizing that and just making it a little bit easier to, to uh, understand. Uh, one is just making something more explicit. So that's uh, the curb stop valve, so that is, that is Waterworks property essentially and our code does prohibit the, you know, you know, average folks from uh, exercising that valve, turning off your own water at the curb stop. A lot of folks don't know that and when you read the ordinances today, it's, it's not intuitive for, you know, someone, you know, reading it. It just says, can't tamper with the Waterworks property. So making that more explicit was a, a big, uh, big thing for us. Making it explicit about when well water can be used, so that's a big thing as far as preventing any cross contamination or, you know, water that's not treated coming into our sanitary system. So making sure we have some provisions for that. Uh, also just making it much more clear where the responsibility lies for uh, service lines. So where is the city's service stop and where does the property owners begin? Again, all of this stuff is, is in there, but you really kinda gotta read between the lines and, and do some calculus to kind of figure it out. Uh, the big one I'm, I, I'll come back to, but uh, I'll mention it just really quick is updating the tap fees for the water, uh, really to cover the costs of the meters, material and labor. And like I say, we'll go through that one in detail. Making explicit the policy about requiring annexation to receive city water. So this is something that's kind of buried in our three mile annexation plan that we adopt every year and something that we consistently apply. And just having something that we can really firmly stand on and point to just makes it so much clearer uh, for everyone. There also is just a, a little bit of a, there's some exceptions that can be made too, so we didn't make it, you know, strictly black and white. Um, I mentioned this before, but separating the storm water from the sanitary sewer because they are different systems and they have different regulations and they're uh, they're really not the same thing. And so making those two uh, articles distinct was, was very important. Uh, updating our solid waste section, this is another one that just really hadn't been touched for a long time. You know, it, it really didn't deal with the green waste service that we currently provide. Uh, that was probably the biggest one. There is a lot of uh, outdated information, didn't include what some of our existing services are um, and how we require folks to handle specifically green waste and also not letting uh, you know, a commercial tree trimming entity to uh, utilize the uh, the, the yard where, where folks um, can drop off their green ri- waste. Really, that's, that's for city utility residents um, versus, you know, seeing these huge loads, which does put a pretty big burden on our staff. And then uh, finally is updating the backflow prevention regulations to comply with the new law. Um, probably the biggest change on that one is requiring residential irrigation systems um, no longer have to submit these tests. So if you had a irrigation system, every year you'd get a letter from us saying you have to submit this. So that removed that one requirement. It also just makes backflow prevention devices have to be tagged. Some kind of very minuscule stuff in that. So to go back to the water uh, tabs, so like I say, this one is, is a pretty big one. Our, our tap fees haven't been changed since two thousand seven. Uh, in two thousand seven, uh, it was established as a five hundred dollar tapping fee, so that doesn't include the planned investment fee. And um, you know, it, it goes without saying that materials cost a lot more. Um, also, uh, uh, labor is a lot more expensive. And so what we did was we, we did a really solid breakdown of what the meter costs actually are for all the little bits and bobs that go into it. We broke it down into two separate types because, you know, there are some that are set inside the building and then there are some that are not, so they just have different requirements. Uh, and then, um, really that, that's kind of, that's kind of the main, main uh, change. One other thing that I do wanna point out is um, there was a penalty that was already, um, already imposed on your, your bill for um, doing a, a shut off, but it was, it was not really codified anywhere. So that was one thing that we really wanted to make sure we, we called out. Um, and then the other thing Um, and then the other thing uh, maybe to point out about the tap fees is that where we would see probably the biggest increases are affordable housing uh, projects that are going on. Uh, I think it's a good time to remind that all of the ones that we have, at least in the pipeline, have had those fees already waived, so it wouldn't affect them. Um, but, you know, it, it certainly is a pretty big jump. But, let's see if Harry wants to add anything.
Oh, I think Deacon did a good job covering it. I think one of the things that's important to, to recognize is what we're bringing to you is just really to cover the cost of the tap fees. Um, what the city's actual hard costs in, in doing the installations. Next year, we're planning on doing a, a rate study. Um, looking at what it, what it, what it's gonna cost the city to continue to cover their operation and capital uh, needs moving forward. That's why we didn't make any adjustments to like the plant investment fee. Um, I think they'll, that might adjust, you know, through their recommendation. The rates that we are bringing today, they may actually be different through that, that rate study, but I think just only covering or making adjustments to the things that we feel are, are real relevant right now is what we're working on. So we, we'll probably revisit this when we have the rate study and make it um, consistent with, with those findings.
Okay, thank you for the report. I'll turn it over to our council now. Councilor Liz Hensley.
So one of the things, obviously, it looks like we need this change. Um, you've spelled out all the costs. I would assume that obviously for a while now, we've lost a lot of money doing taps. Um, so in the long run, this is giving money back to the city to be able to do other things with versus paying the extra costs.
Correct, yes.
Well, and I would say I also considered it an equity issue to where development's paying for itself, instead of all the re- rate payers paying for it.
Yes.
Um, I feel like the only time we should have the rate payers subsidizing is if councils considered it and made it a decision. Whereas under this, the rate payers were subsidizing it.
Yeah, no, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hensley. Councilor Cribbs.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and I'm honestly just echoing Liz's thing. It's just driving home the point from what I'm understanding is that the city's not profiting off this at all. You broke down the price so that you could charge an equitable amount to, and it's not even really to the taxpayer as much as the contractor. So, and the, the people actually doing the work of building the houses, they would be the one looking into these, these kind of fees. Um, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Cribbs. Okay, don't see any other lights. Councilor Janne Vehoe.
Mayor, I'm going to make a motion that we move to approve on first reading, ordinance number twenty dash twenty twenty-five, and set it for a public hearing on September seventeenth at seven o'clock or soon thereafter.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. I think somebody's jammed. Oh, sorry.
Um, the motion carried to five to one. But, I'm not sure.
Somebody voted no. Who voted no?
With Councilor Carson casting the no vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. Development Services Quarterly Update on Housing and Downtown Plans.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Members of Council. This is your quarterly update on downtown and housing. I do not have very many good pictures this time, so you've got a lot of logos, but we did do some kind of fun stuff. It's been an interesting few months since June. Kind of to piggyback on the things that our lovely Chairman of the Main Street Committee was saying. A lot of projects are sort of in motion that have been in motion for years. So it feels like we're giving some of the same updates over and over again, but it, it's still pretty exciting stuff, so. Next slide, please. Okay, so in the time since we saw you last, we did a conditional use for a redevelopment of the Valley Textile Building. These are not the sexiest of drawings, but this is what the front, one, one of the renderings of what the front might look like. And every facelift on that first block of downtown really is so worth it, because there's so many warehouses. And they wanna do some brick facades, and they'll make the entrance sort of face the corner of Hunt and Main. Um, so it's a really exciting project that James Billings is doing, and he has gone through a lot of iterations of what to do with the Valley Textile Building. And I think that moving his offices in there and opening up um, where he currently has Valley Lock and Security and his current offices up for other uses, I think is a, is a big win for downtown. And, and it took a lot of um, a lot of vetting with city staff and a lot of open mindedness from Billings to get it done. So we're kind of excited about that one. Um, the alley activation project continues to move forward. I think everybody saw that they were lining the sewer and working on it. Public Works did the portion that's behind the old Friday Health Building and behind the Bistro Rialto, so that's kind of done and continues to move forward. The other two alleys will be done next year. All the fun elements, um, all the art and planters and lighting, that'll happen next year. Um, and we're still working through the utility work for Hunt Avenue. Um, the plans are all done. CDOT's just waiting for us to submit them. We need to put the project out to bid by December. Um, but it, it does look like we will be able to build Hunt Avenue in its entirety, I hope, uh, next year. And so all the times where we talked about piecemealing it or just doing one block, it looks like we're gonna be able to do some version of the entire thing, and that's the magic of your city manager and your Public Works Director, so. Um, we did also, if you wanna go to the next slide, we were able to help supplement that, getting Hunt done, by getting another almost two hundred thousand dollars. So we have the one million left, or a little over a million left. Um, from the, the first grant that we got, the revitalized Main Street grant from CDOT, and then we were also rated, I think in the top two or three for the regional uh, multimodal transportation and mitigation option fund, which is a nice thing, because you're actually uh, rated by your peers. So not by CDOT, might be CDOT funds, but it's actually something that's regionally decided by leadership, and they decided that the Hunt Avenue project was a priority and that they were excited about it getting built, so. It is not what we asked for. We asked for seven hundred thousand. But there's some real shortfalls on that program, and we're really lucky to have gotten the one seventy-eight. We're excited. So, every little bit helps. Um, next, this is one where I should have gotten great pictures, cause these were both pretty big deals. Um, but you got logos, and I apologize. So we had Main Street Colorado at a council work session, which you all remember, but again, like, you know, Matt Abbey said, it's really exciting to just be recognized for all the work that we've already been doing for years. And to have that designation just sort of be like the ceremonial cherry on top. And then um, DU was here, the School of Public and Global Affairs, um, and we did sort of a, it was Kale Mortensen and I from Visit Alamosa did a, a really cool tour of our downtown. And it was, there were people from CDOT, there were people from um, that worked for uh, Denver City Council. There were a, it was a really interesting cross section of like innovators from across the state, and they were really impressed with our downtown. And so it was a nice moment for them to just sort of acknowledge all the work we've done, talk about how activated our downtown is, really recognize how many projects we have going on, and what a huge deal that is for a community our size. Um, and then because they're from Denver and front range communities, they were very worried that like, we'll lose our sense of place, so all the protections that we have um, to make sure that Alamosa stays Alamosa, to which our response is always, well, we're working on housing. So we're making downtown cool, and then we're working on housing so that Alamosa inherently stays Alamosa, because the people that live here can still afford to live here. So that segues nicely into my next slide. Um, just kidding. Or yeah, housing. Just kidding. Um, we finished the technical assistance proj- project, which we just did a work session on. Um, I think the deliverables are really exciting. They're all à la carte. You know, we can do none of them, we can do all of them. Um, but it, they're all relatively innovative. They've all been used in other communities, and they really are the first stab at we have dilapidated houses in our community. We don't want to just punish people for having them. We wanna be able to be helpful. And how can we do that? How can a government step in into a realm that governments don't usually step in and help people fix their homes? So in that sense, we're really proud of that document. It took, um, we were awarded it, and it was supposed to be a year-long planning process, and the grant funds got put on hold, and so it ended up being a six-month process. And so it was, it was all hands on deck. Deacon and I were in a lot of meetings. They would all the time send us huge documents and give us twenty-four hours to review them, so it was, it was a huge lift, and as usual, Deacon was amazing. Um, but it, it, the final deliverable is a product we're really proud of. Um, also, good pre-development meetings happening. I mean, talking about some large residential development, kind of near the high school, and institutional residential development, and even potentially a mobile home development. So those are all potentially really big deals, and right now, we're building a lot, but we don't have a lot in the pipeline. So having those conversations and helping people visualize what that will look like is really important, so that we do have projects in the next few years. Um, and then it looks like um, Tierra Zul's gonna need to change some of their planned unit development, but it's very minor, and it, it's just something to allow them to um, take advantage of different housing types. So as the project evolves and as it gets built, there's gonna be little changes, and these are the kind of things that we need to be able to pivot and support, so that the project gets done. Um, and then also, they're talking a little bit about multifamily, so CRHGC's really come a long way in the last five, six years, and their evolution into the types of housing they build, and how open-minded they are, and being landlords, just as an organization, they have really, really grown to adapt to the needs of our community, and we're really thankful for that. They're great partners. Hmm, we got fifty thousand dollars. Um, it's for the Housing Action Plan, Housing Needs Assessment, Housing Needs Assessment portion of our comp plan. Um, it's kind of a new program that Dole is putting on, but we were able to secure it, and so it's every little bit that helps towards our kind of massive comp plan. Deacon calls it the mother of all comp plans. It's kind of truly what it's gonna be, so just prepare you for next year, cause it's gonna happen. And then finally, um, our relationships. We also, much like two kind of exciting visits to our downtown, and um, we also had some kind of exciting uh, visits from the state. So Division of Housing did a regional tour all around the state. It was a listening tour. They got to sit in a room with us, talk about resources, that maybe some of the things we hadn't even heard of, which was great, especially some of the resources available for the Century Mobile Home Park. Um, but the other thing is, it's an opportunity to sort of air our concerns. I mean, I think that the divide between rural and urban Colorado is very real. I think a lot of the housing funds still end up in urban Colorado, and I think that a lot of the rules and regulations that are made, and the funding programs that are created are funneled into those communities, and rural Colorado gets left out a lot. And so to be able to sit in a room with the division leadership and tell them that in a gracious way is a conversation. I think it's important, and then they can take that back to their leadership and legislators and the governor, and those are really important conversations to have. Um, our mayor was there. Um, and then we also had a, a meeting last week with the Proposition One Twenty-three Compliance Team. That's to make sure that we're gonna meet our commitments. We said we'd have a certain number of housing units by twenty twenty-six. It looks like we're gonna do that and then some. Like, they asked if we'd be willing to share our housing numbers with other communities, and we're like, we don't really think that there's other communities that are doing this, but maybe. Um, we, we tried to be gracious, but I, I think we'll be fine. I think other communities will be fine too. Um, toured the Alamosa Housing Authority remodels that you potentially helped approve this evening, which are really beautiful. Some of those units are very old, and a lot of times the tenants for the Housing Authority units live there for twenty, thirty years, you know, like they, they take really good care of their homes, but a lot of them are very, very outdated. And so the remodels that the Housing Authority have done are very thoughtful. Um, they have pantries I'm very jealous of, but like, they're beautiful homes, and it's really nice to see that work get done. And then we just regularly meet with Boyd to try to get that project across the finish line, and same thing with Tierra Zul. So the same kind of work we've been working on for the last five years. So I think that's the end.
All right, another wonderful report. Thank you, uh, Ms. James. I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for Councilwoman. I'm not for sure which one of you would first, so um, Council Carson then Council Cribbs.
Um, I just had a question. It might be dumb, so excuse me, but uh, one of the first slides you had was of Hunt. Okay, and the parking on it was vertical, like horizontal on one side and, and um, diagonal on the other side. Is that how it's gonna be?
Can't remember off the top of my head. I can look to the back of the room.
And I'm sorry, it was just one of those things that just aesthetically kind of weird to me, and I didn't, I've never seen that. I wasn't sure if that, or if I have seen it, I don't remember.
It won't be symmetrical. So on the east side, for sure, there's a multimodal trail. So on the east side of the road, it's a much larger pedestrian trail. And so I can't remember if that's how the parking ended up. This was, these were the, one of the slides we took to the public for First Fridays for Input. And so it's a ni- it's one of the nice color renderings we have. I don't remember if it actually looks like that. Obviously, it's gonna be prettier. But um, the one, so to your right, where that sidewalk is, that will be like the big trail. So like, the rest, the other side will be just a standard sized sidewalk. The other one will have room for the pedestrians, all the art, all the seating, all the planters, all those special things will just be on the east side of the road. And so I think that was probably the theory there is having on-street parking instead of diagonal allows for that extra, but I don't remember what the final layout is.
Okay, that's cool. I was just curious. Thank you.
I could pull some really boring engineering plans for you next time?
Yeah, you're good. Just a moment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Council Carson. Uh, Council Cribbs and Council Hensley.
Thank you, Mayor. Engineering plans are never boring. They are fascinating, and there's lots of angles, and I enjoy them thoroughly. So, having said that, my question is also about Hunt. Um, because the, the last I've, I did a touch point on, um, you had the community support, you, you chose for that block the design that was going to go down. Um, you, you, but you also spoke that you have the ability now to do all of Hunt. Does that include the blocks being different themes? Oh, awesome.
And I almost feel like we should have had a drum roll for that, because we had a whole work session, and we had to deliver the sad news that we were probably only gonna be able to do a block. We'll go after grants and all of that kind of stuff. But honestly, um, Harry deserves a lot of credit of figuring out how we can make this work. Um, and then obviously, um, Leanne too, of in the budget and how these costs can be utilized to, to get almost all of Hunt done. We are gonna, it's gonna be close. So how we're gonna do the RFP is we know we can definitely do two, and then we'll have the add-on of the third type of situation, but it's gonna be super close, and we're just holding on to hope.
That's awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Council Hensley.
So I don't have a question. I just wanted to commend you. I think it's great, and I feel like it's the yin to the yang, having the downtown and then the housing. Um, but oh my gosh, all the work and all the detail that goes into that. So thank you so much, and to your team.
Okay, I'll just wrap things up. I'm gonna give you the drum roll, Heather. Mentioned. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, Regular Business Committee Reports. Do we have any committee reports? Council Cribbs?
Thank you.
And Councilor Jackie Vehoe.
Um, so I have to, um, the Senior Center, um, met with her monthly. Everything's going great. They had a very successful um, yard sale and a very successful early iron breakfast. Um, I did want to just bring everyone up to date. They, they are still doing the, the Thursday lunches um, to help out the, the agency on aging there. And um, the number that was given to us was since they announced it last year, when they first started doing the Thursday lunches, they have served over sixteen hundred people, just on the Thursdays. So just to give you an idea, um, they were able to get funding to continue this through um, the end of fiscal um, twenty-six. So they're, they're still going strong, and they're still looking for funding to continue it, if it needs to be continued, type thing, but um, it was an issue, not an issue, it was a discussion item a little bit ago, so I just wanted to bring everybody up. Pardon me, on the um, on the actual numbers behind those actions. Uh, they're, they're still, they're planning a lot of night events and a lot of night speakers about once a month. Um, they encourage anyone to, to go out and, and um, experience those. There are a lot of history-type speakers. There's a lot of um, cultural-type speakers that are coming out and open to the public. So just to try to activate the Senior Center more at night and um, on the weekends occasionally, things of that nature. My other meeting was with um, Alamosa Creates, and that's one of my favorite ones. Not supposed to have a favorite kid, but there it is. And um, but the big news around Alamosa Creates is that next week, they have a very busy weekend. It starts September eleventh over at the Farm Park. They're going to unveil all the, all the data they received from the community about what it would take, what people want to see as a, as a creative district here in Alamosa. So they're going to unveil those findings to the community and also use it, um, as a little bit of a kickoff for the upcoming Art Fest that weekend. Friday night, the very next night over at the museum, everyone is invited to meet all the artists that have worked so hard to bring sculptures to the, the city for Saturday's event, which a little bit different. I'm very excited. We're, we're closing a street and we're doing it from one to six on Saturday. And there's not only going to be, um, artists inside the businesses, attracting, attracting people into the businesses. We're also going to have tented artists outside, um, over by the Brew Pub, a whole section of that, as well as uh, youth artists that will be stationed behind Solita Circus. And so, um, lots of little details I'm leaving out because you'll just have to come and find for yourself, but I encourage everyone to come out. It's going to be, it's going to be a great time and it's a great kickoff to what the Alamosa Creates team has done. It's just to be on a fly on a wall and watch all these great minds just fly with ideas and be so successful at it. It, it's just so inspiring. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council Krebs. Councilor Jackie Vio.
So, um, we had a homeless coalition meeting last week. They reported numbers at St. Benedict's. I believe there's only ten people there right now. There's low crime right now. Um, they talked about how the CSOs are going over and beyond. And, um, they reported on Horizon Heights that a lot of people have moved out. But it was a positive move because they've all moved to better housing. So she said that the program right now is very successful and they have a waiting list for Horizon Heights. Century Mobile, um, many trailers have been moved, removed, but there's still a lot of trailers that need to be moved, but there's issues with asbestos. Boyd School, like, um, they said is moving forward. For housing, they said that they had four candidates for the executive director, so they should be hiring soon. And we also reviewed a lot of documents that were given to us that were developed. I'm guessing about pre-COVID and to see if we wanted to go forward with any of those documents. I think that's about it.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Jackie Vio. That'll bring us down, down now to staff announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we don't have a lot and they're, they're kind of varied. The only item I would add to Councilor Krebs is at that Friday night event, uh, at five thirty for the artist reception. That's also where we present the Champion of the Arts Award. So that's exciting because we actually, we, the Alamosa Creates Committee really took ownership over the whole event, including that. And so there was a request advertised. People have been nominated, all of that type of thing. So it's a much bigger deal. And so we're excited to continue that award. And so I would just add that little nugget to, to what Councilor Krebs shared. Obviously, last week, we had a, a very interesting work session with, um, Alamosa County as it relates to homelessness and, and enforcement. There's interesting conversation because we know back when we held our public meeting to discuss if we should keep St. Benedict or not. The sheriff at that point in time had indicated that our enforcement, both at St. Benedict and within city limits, was creating some issues as some of this population moves out more into the county. But then last week, when we were having this discussion, um, there seems to be a bit of a change in the perception of homeless and, and if it's a problem or not from a county perspective. And so, um, it was a very positive conversation. There's ideas, I think, that the commissioners can take away and, and think about it. I'll check back in with, with Ronnie after a few weeks to see if there needs to be any future discussions. But obviously for our community, as, as big of an issue homelessness is, it's, it's interesting when some of these very important discussions happen in a work session. They don't always, the public's not always aware of them type of thing. And so I just wanted to bring that up in this, in this public meeting as well. And then lastly, you know, at the end of last week, from a city perspective, we lost a member of our family. And so our staff's still working on that and, and feeling that and, and finding our way through this period of time, but it just feels like it would be wrong not to mention the impact that Jeremy had on our organization, on his coworkers and on this community. He was a very quiet to some individual, um, but took a lot of pride in his work and he loved Alamosa. And everything he did was to try to make a better community. And when someone lives their life that way, it deserves to be recognized. So with that, that's all I have from a staff update.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. That brings us to the last item on the agenda. Uh, Council Comments. Councilor Jackie Vio.
I just want to send out prayers to Jeremy's family as well as his coworkers and everybody. Sad situation.
Okay, I don't see any other lights on, so I'll go ahead and wrap things up. I too want to send out prayers to Jeremy's family as well and also to entire staff who are dealing with, with this situation. And I, I want to commend the Parks and Rec team for, uh, doing all they could do to continue to move forward. During this difficult time, uh, to make sure that the early iron event, uh, took place and all the other staff that participated to make that, uh, event take place as well. All right, so this meeting now is adjourned.